Be the case. Wanted to thank everyone who is here thus far. Continuing our study on last that case study. Luke chapter fifteen. Those who don't know that then boy, I don't know where you've been. Yes, we've been studying the Bible of the last things. The lost coin, the lost sheep and the lost son. Started with the lost sheep. We've been diagnosing the issues. Correlating those issues to us and then prescribing some means of of actually countering or treating the diagnoses that we've been finding in these different characters. So we've been looking at the sheep. That was the initial character that we're looking at. And we've been looking for the past two or three classes on what we call grazer's grief. And grazer's grief speaks speaks to the fact that when sheep are grazing, they have their heads down for the entire time for the most part. And that they have to wander because they consume grass so quickly. And other result of these two factors that can lead to sheep getting lost. And we found that that relates to us as individuals that sometimes poor prioritization or business leads to us not putting the type of emphasis that we should on our spiritual life or the pursuit of more or the lack of satisfaction with what we currently have can also have similar effects in regards to negatively affecting our spirituality. And we've been looking at some prescriptive methods as to how we can deal with this. How do we get to a place where our spiritual life and the significance of that life is number one and everything else follows afterward? And the first prescriptive method that we're looking at is the priority pill or pill of priority. And essentially, the idea behind this is identifying what should come first. What should be the priority in my life and doubling down on that concept? And probably should go back in the slide for a bit. So we we looked at Matthew chapter six verse thirty-one to thirty-three, which we're very familiar with seeking for the kingdom of God, etc. And all these things shall be added unto you. And we started looking on Sunday at first Timothy chapter four. Just for emphasis, I'm going to read through these verses before we get into where we left off. But reject profane and old wives' fables and exercise yourself toward godliness. For bodily exercise profits a little, but godliness is profitable for all things. Having promise of the life that now is and of that which is to come. This is a faithful saying worthy of all acceptance. So we looked at verse seven in class on Sunday. And one of the concerns that was brought up and validly so was the the idea of the word that means reject, which means to beg off. And the concept that I had initially understood the word to mean was that it had an it essentially gave the impression that you need to gain or ask for permission to be excused from. And that is just one side of the definition. The other side of the definition is to withdraw oneself from a particular circumstance. So there is an aspect where one requires or has to gain permission to be excused. And then another situation where one excuses themselves from a situation without need for permission or otherwise. But thank you, Brother Smith, for having me look that up. I recognize that it was more of a incomplete definition than a contradictory one. So in this circumstance, it wouldn't be the initial definition that was put forward of having to ask or gain permission, but rather what what is highlighted below, which is the idea of declining, shunning or avoiding, which doesn't require permission to excuse oneself in those circumstances. And we see where Paul was telling Timothy to avoid traditional beliefs for the one the most part, especially traditional beliefs that had negative connotations and rather to exercise himself toward godliness. And this is, this is the last thing that we looked at. So we saw where exercise, the word meant to practice naked and it was it derived from the fact that at that time in gyms, the individuals would train whilst naked. And Paul uses this, the exercise verb so as to reinforce his point in the next part of this verse or the next verse, I believe, verse eight. So he starts with exercise yourself toward godliness. And he uses the idea of exercise because he wants to make a comparison or draw an analogy on physical exercise. So he encourages Timothy to exercise himself toward godliness. And godliness here being commitment to God and commitment to the related duties. So we're going to pick up now where we had stopped on Sunday, which is at verse eight. And it starts by saying for bodily exercise profits a little. Oh, before we continue, is there anyone who has any questions in regards to last week? I think I see one hand gone up. We're gone. Somebody had their handle. Any questions or queries about the
Somebody thought it was password.
Oh, 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 ha, 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 ha. Well, I like that.
Yes, Stephen, it was me. I thought it was password.
God bless, that is good for the school. But I I appreciate that you're on your toes and boy, Jesus Smith, you see what you're called? Everybody have a jump the gun if they want a chance to beat you. All right, but since we don't have any queries, then let's let's get in. So remember that from verse seven, Paul tells Timothy that he should exercise himself towards godliness. And then now he he establishes why he used the word exercise because he wants Timothy to have an idea of exercise in his mind. This is for bodily exercise profits a little. Four here. Conjunction and we're going to keep hammering these home because one of the most important parts about studying our Bible is to identify the connections between words. A lot of the understanding that takes place in scripture comes from understanding the connection between groups of words. So when God says something and then says something afterward, the conjunction will tell us exactly how those words are connected. Is God saying that this is good because of this? Is God saying this is so, but then this is also so? Knowing the conjunction can help us to understand the connection. And Paul is letting us know here. I seen something in the chat. Paul is letting us know here, sorry about that, that the reason that Timothy should exercise himself towards godliness is going to be established now. So Paul is saying, hey, exercise yourself toward godliness. And here is why, here is the reason, here's the ground as to why you should do so. And he starts by saying bodily exercise profits a little. Bodily is an adjective here describing the type of exercise and it speaks of corporal corporal or physical. The corporal literally means having form, having a body, having tangibility. And it speaks to our physical frame. So Paul is letting us know here that I use exercise in a figurative manner when I said exercise towards godliness. And I'm now contrasting that figurative exercise to the physical or more literal form of exercise. Exercise here, gymnasium, the noun, the verb is what Paul used in the verse before. So he's now using the noun and it is, it speaks to training or exercise. We all know what exercises. It says profits. It said bodily exercise profits. And profits here means it is helpful or serviceable. So it provides a service to you. It is helpful. Advantageous, profitable. That is the idea behind it. But then he goes on to say a little. So bodily exercise is advantageous, but it is advantageous to a small degree. And the word here means puny. So very small, very small. And this can be in extent, degree, number, duration or value. And in this case, it is speaking of the value. So the value that is provided, the helpful value that is provided from physical exercise is very small, puny. But it has value, mark you, it has value. The the contrast that Paul wants to make is why he uses this terminology. So he is trying to say that what bodily exercise can provide you compared to spiritual exercise, it is puny, tiny, miniscule. And in understanding priority, that is one of the things that we need to, we need to learn. That when we are comparing spiritual benefits to physical benefits, spiritual benefits are giants and physical benefits are puny. And we all know as physical beings that bodily exercise has much benefits to our physical state. So Paul isn't saying that the benefits that physical exercise provides to your physical state is small. What he's saying is the overarching benefits that we will view as wonderful, especially if you work out regularly and you identify how significant these things can help you physically. When you compare that to what you garner from be exercising yourself towards godliness, it cannot be compared. Um, go ahead, Sister Smith.
Yes, Stephen, I was looking at the the verse and the word profits. You say it's an adjective.
The the Greek word.
Or the Greek word, but in the sense, in the verse, it's really a verb.
In the verse, in English, it is used as a verb.
Okay.
Other verb, but if we were to translate this using the parts of speech that are established here, it it wouldn't be used as like this. So essentially, what it would be is, um, let me make sure I put this right. It would be bodily exercise is profitable. Rather than saying for bodily exercise profits, which makes it a verb, it would describe the exercise as being profitable. So it would lit, it would be bodily exercise is profitable, but little in its profits. And and because that clearly sounds more confusing, they changed the part of speech to ensure that the message is carried out, but in a way that is more easily understood. But in the Greek, adjectives are used because it is making it clear what is being described. Exercise is being described as profiting little. So it would, those two would be adjectives together. I don't know if that, if that clears up that.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. All right, so, um, going to be sure. My internet connection, why this? Can you guys hear me? Hello, can you guys hear me, somebody?
Yes, I can hear you, Stephen.
Just shipped in. Hello?
I can hear you, Stephen.
Can you hear me clearly?
Yes.
Okay, give me one second, please. I just got to put up these headphones properly. Sorry about that, um, technology trying to take over. All right, um, confirmation that I'm being heard again, please.
I can hear you.
Wonderful. Thank you for that. All right, I'm hoping that my internet will will stand up to make sure this video plays properly. So everybody can see it on their screen. One person can confirm.
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you, Sister Paula. All right, let's, let me play it and hope for the best. Hold on, I just remembered that I need to make sure that I share in my sound. Give me one second, please. At Natasha. Okay, sorry about that. I didn't share my sound. Oh, no, where did it go now? Okay. All right, let me start over now.
There once was a man who fell in love with his own reflection.
Everybody hearing?
I can hear.
And the video is playing properly?
Yes, it is.
Okay, wonderful. All right, let me.
There once was a man who fell in love with his own reflection. After him, he started to accrue, starving others of his attention. As the weeks moved, he was glued. Some thought he'd eat himself like food. Every inch improved, he would persist. Until self-worship turned him into a gift. A gift not just for him to treasure, but a gift that brought the whole world pleasure. And so I put this question to you all. Does that not make self-obsession? The most selfish act of all.
All right, um, if anyone is like me when I first saw this ad, you probably asked yourself, what did you just watch? Don't know if anyone shares the sentiment that I share.
Yes, I was.
So this is an ad for Equinox, which is a gym. And I don't know if anyone can tell me, um, what story were they extremely loosely um, referring to in the initial part of the video? Point for your team, naturally.
The story of creation, Adam and Eve.
No, so book don't get nothing from that. Go ahead, Rob.
Yeah, Narcissus was a story of narcissism from Greek mythology.
Exactly. So for those who don't know, there's a bloke called Narcissus in in Greek mythology, um, and apparently a very good looking youth stumbled upon. So he was very, he believed himself to be a very attractive person. A lot of people, a lot of ladies were flocking him and he he was, he was not concerned about them because as far as he was concerned, they weren't as attractive as he was. One day he happened upon a body of water. Some, some, um, of the mythologies state that he upset him, upset the gods and them trick him. But the the point is that he happened upon a body of water and he saw his reflection. And initially, he did not know that it was a reflection. He thought it was another individual as good looking as he was and he was entranced. And upon finding out that it was his reflection and it wasn't somebody else, he was so distraught that he killed himself. That is one version. There's another version that said that he knew it was his reflection, but he was so entranced by his reflection that he couldn't pull himself away from it. So he ended staring at the reflection until he fell in and he drowned. Essentially, the point of the story was to establish that you should not be so in love with yourself that you get caught up in it. And from that mythological individual, the idea of narcissism came up. So narcissism is based on the Greek mythology story of Narcissus. The idea of being so in love with yourself that nothing else is of value. And for some strange and deluded reason, this gym company decided that they were going to base an ad on Narcissus, changing the story from what it really was to the ideology that in him being so entranced in himself, he provided others with benefits. And they made a very interesting statement about if self, if in being obsessed with yourself, others benefit, doesn't that make self-love the more selfish, selfless act of all? This is the world that we live within. Folks where you can take something like this and twist it and you you try to, the conclusion that you draw, if you aren't careful about the message, you will presume that there is validity in it. You make a false statement, you make it sound nice and individuals will buy into the idea that this, this makes sense. I don't know what all the dancing and whatever gyrations that looks like they were having strokes was supposed to mean. But this is apparently supposed to make you see this and want to go to the gym because in being obsessed with yourselves, you are providing others with pleasure. Very, very dangerous message, in my opinion. Why did you bring that up, Stephen? Obviously, this video paints a very, um, a a poor example of of how we can become obsessed with ourselves or we can become vain. But in my mind, I am starting to recognize that isn't this how we look to God when we value the physical things over the spiritual? Isn't it ridiculous in God's eyes? Having clearly established how significant the things that are spiritual are, yet to see us running down, clamoring after, putting out endless effort for the physical. Are we any different than Narcissus? When we focus majority of our time or effort and our energy in ourselves? And it may not feel like self because we are doing other things. But as far as God is concerned, if we are focusing not on Him, then it is self. Even the things that we view to be selfless for the most part are done to please us. We have to be very careful that we don't, we don't mock these kinds of displays and say, why? These people are, this is crazy. If people are obsessed with themselves, it is clear narcissism. But from God's perspective, we are as narcissistic. We are as focused on ourselves and not on what is most important. And in Paul's comparison between physical and spiritual, for a lot of us, we can easily jump behind the significance of physical, physical, um, benefits. And that's why Paul uses it. He knows that Timothy understands the benefits that they are from physical exercise. Health benefits, your mental benefits, social benefits, emotional benefits. All of those things are there from from physical exercise. And Paul is using that to to show Timothy that, hey, you see all these things that you think are wonderful? You think all these things that that are good, you think all these things that are advantageous? All these things that are profitable? When you compare them to godliness, when you compare them to godliness, puny, minute of of very little profit. And that's what we need to, that's what we need to understand. That's what we need to understand. The things that we value, the physical things that we think are so significant and so beneficial to us. God is letting us know through scripture that these things pale in comparison to the benefits that come from godliness. And before we look at exactly how those benefits are established, I want us to look at why it is significant that Paul used the idea of exercise. So I'm sure everyone in here has exercised at one point in their life. And I don't mean done some physical activity, but decided that, you know what, I'm going to exercise. We start the exercise regime, et cetera, et cetera. And on committing to exercising, there are certain things that if you want to be fruitful in your results, you have to take into consideration. The first one is timing. Timing. And timing here referring to when you are going to exercise and for how long. Seth and I play tennis in the mornings. Um, probably three mornings for the week. We play on the courts at Uwe. There is a a father and his two children who get training in the morning as well. And on the Uwe court, there's three courts, but there's one court that is excellent, one court that is excellent compared to the other two. So that's a court that Seth and I initially started playing on. One of the mornings Seth allowed the father and the sons to train on that, on that court. And then after that, it became a first come, first served thing. So once they reached before, that's where they went. So Seth and I decided that, hey, this is the court we want to play on. We have to make sure that we are there so that we get that court. It's Christmas time now. Visibility is limited to play until about six fifteen, six twenty. But the father and the son come out at about, about, and the sons come out at about six o'clock, sometimes earlier. So Seth and I are there latest 5:45 and we're sitting down or we're stretching until we can see. But we get there in time because we need to get the court so that we can play the best game of tennis. We are willing to spend forty-five minutes, thirty minutes, twenty minutes not exercising so that we can exercise the way that we want to exercise. Why is that significant, Stephen? We have clearly recognized that to get what we want out of the exercise, we have to do it during a particular time, before the sun comes up. And we have to do it at a particular place, on that court. And then we make the steps necessary, the extra effort to ensure that we get to the place that is going to provide the value. In looking at this passage, I, I recognize that I was stepping on my own con six thousand times. When have I ever put out this kind of effort deliberately in regards to my own spiritual growth? Whether it be Bible study, whether it be meditation, whether it be devotion? When have I decided that, hey, because I want to do this during the time that it is most beneficial to me, I will wake up thirty minutes earlier, I will leave my house when the place dark, I will sit down for thirty minutes waiting until I have the access to do the thing that provides me with the greatest benefit? When have I set aside that kind of time? And I realize that, boy, I don't think that that has ever been the case. Don't think I have ever viewed the benefits of exercising towards godliness as I view the benefits of exercising physically. And that is where Paul wants us to go. And that's why Paul makes this comparison because we understand. There's another statement that I want to focus on, exercise wise, and it's no pain, no gain. Sure, we're, we're all familiar with the idea that if you want to get the kind of results, physically speaking, exercise, there has to be some pain. Whether it be lactic acid buildup because you're running up and down and your, your respiration and your lungs and you're feeling the burn. Or whether it be actual muscle tearing, for those who, who lift weights or try to build muscle. For your muscles to get stronger, to grow, you have to go through that kind of pain when you're moving from one. You, you, you keep lifting weights consistently. Man, I'll go any more medical because doctors are on the chat and they know what I'm realizing. I don't know what they're talking about. But pain, for you to get the growth that you want, for you to reach a level where you can manage greater weight, for you to be able to run for a longer period of time, for you to be able to lift more than you used to. It takes pain. You're going to be sore. You're going to go through those. Am I willing, am I willing to put out the effort that puts me in a place of pain, of soreness, so that I can see the results that I want? Am I willing to be uncomfortable? Am I willing to suffer discomfort for my spiritual growth? If I want to be bold in, in sharing the word, if I want to reach a state where I can talk to people about my faith without fear, am I, am I willing to do it when I am embarrassed? Am I willing to do it when I am uncomfortable? Am I willing to do it when I am stuttering, when I'm stammering, when I'm not getting the point across as effectively as I would like to? Because you see, if you want to get to the boldness, if you want to get to the point where you can declare, you have to exercise towards that. You don't just go to the gym and pick up two hundred pounds weights and start bench pressing it. You start smaller. You start with what your muscles are already capable of lifting and you lift that consistently. And as you lift that, you increase the weight slowly and you build up. Do we do that with our spiritual growth? Is that how we, we take on the things that we need to? Or do we say, you know what, I don't have the skill. I wasn't called in this manner. You know, God said that some are for teaching and some are for encouraging. So that is my crutch. I'm not good in song leading, so I'm not going to learn to sing. Man, I've got no training for singing. I can't speak well, so I'm not going to teach because that's not my skill rather than learning to teach. Are we exercising towards godliness? Are we putting ourselves in positions of discomfort so that we can do more? So that we can be stronger? Because we do it, we do it in our physical life. We do it, um, exercise wise, we do it job wise, we're in a job. And a new responsibility has been brought to our, to our attention on our, on our, um, job description, something new task that we're not familiar with. Do we then say, okay, boss, I don't know how to do this, you know, so yeah, I'm going to fire me. Or, but I don't know how to do this, so go give somebody else because I'm not doing it. Probably some people who have a similar mind to me, but for the most part, we try to find out how to do it, whether through trial and error, whether through training that has been established by the company, whether through training that we need to do on our own. If we're looking at promotion, if we want to move into a better position and one of the requirements for the position is some certification or some minor degree, et cetera. Do we say, well, I don't have what it takes. I don't have it at the moment, so I can't get in that position? When we're lazy, yes, but for the most part, we go and get it. We learn the skills that are necessary to be in the position to carry out this function effectively. We need to, to transfer this exercise to our spiritual life. Why? Because the benefits that come from all these secular things pale, pale significantly in comparison to the benefits that come from godliness. And if we, that's the mindset. If we don't start to get that mindset, we're never going to prioritize spiritual things. If we don't start to understand that where my effort is going, where my energy is going, where my time is going is in the things of the least value. If we don't understand that, we will continue to spend our time and our energy and our effort in things that are of puny value, as Paul puts it. But godliness is profitable for all things. For godliness is profitable for all things. But here means on the contrary. So this is establishing the comparison between physical exercise and exercising towards godliness. Paul lets you know that on one hand, you have physical exercise whose benefits are are puny. Think of a, a, a scale, a balance scale where spiritual benefits on one side and physical benefits from exercise on the other side. Paul is letting you know that the benefits for, when you put the benefits for physical exercise beside the benefits for spiritual exercise, there's no balance. One side is down to your knee and the other side is up in the air. Profitable for all things. And we, we already established that godliness is created towards God. Profit, we looked at that as well. So this is the same adjective that is used. So Sister Smith to answer your question, if you realize here, the adjective form is used in English of the same verb that was used, I mean, the same word that was used as a verb in the initial verse. So they just changed the part of speech so as to allow for easier understanding when translating it to English. Helpful or serviceable. And the benefits, the benefits of godliness extend to everything. Everything. So it didn't even, it didn't even establish a value to godliness. Rather, it established the fact that the, the advantageousness of godliness, the benefits of godliness apply to everything. Physical, physical, um, exercise is beneficial for physical things. And even in that regard, it is limited. I could run up and down and be the, the fittest case of, state of my life. And boom, cancer hit me down. There are a lot of scenarios where athletes who are in excellent condition end up affected by, by physical condition. Brother Andrea, I see your hand, go ahead.
Yes, brother, Stephen, I mean, wow, 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 wow. It's a godliness is profitable for, for all things. Should it therefore now mean that I do an amazing introspection on my life to ensure that godliness is a part of it? Or, or, or do I just live my life and, 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 and wherever I think it is prudent for godliness, then, 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 then I make the adjustment? So is it that godliness, is it that I, is it the other way around? Should, 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 everything I do, I mean, everything I do? But I mean, in context, I don't expect, you know, when you have beer, just say godliness. But I'm the same, you know, um, is it that I have to do some introspection and really measure my life and my living and my choices and my decisions? My thinking, uh, you know, should I, should I, should I ensure that godliness is, is, is heavily contributes to, 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 to that? Or should it just be that, you know, something, I'm, I'm living my life and, and whatever I deem to be the right thing to do or the righteous thing to do, then I just ensure that godliness is a part of it? Um, is, should there be a distinction? I guess I should ask.
Brother Andrea, you're leading, you're leading me to the answer. It's a very easy one. Um, that's why I like how Paul established it. He didn't just say be God. He didn't just say, um, strive after godliness. Use the word exercise. And the word exercise means train. It's not just the physical exercise, but it speaks to the idea of reaching a point through training. And for anyone who, who tries to reach a point, physically speaking, so if you're exercising, training for reach a partic- particular standard, physical exercise is not the only thing you have to take into consideration. You have to start thinking about diet. You have to start thinking about rest. You have to start thinking about, um, keeping yourself free from injury. It's a lifestyle now. If you want to train to a particular extent, it has to become lifestyle. It's not just running up and down every morning. Because if I run up and down every morning and then I put foolishness in my stomach, man, I've got to reach the state that I'm supposed to be. If I'm not going to sleep at night to ensure that my body recovers from the exercise, then I'm not going to see the benefits that I want. And Paul using this training to show us that, or, or striving after godliness is now an all encompassing effort. This now will have to take root in all of the aspects of your life. And as you said, brother Andrea, we're not talking pedantically where, okay, I get up in the morning and when I put my first step is godliness and my second step is godliness. That's not what we're talking about. But what drives my decision? What drives my actions? What drives my thoughts? What motivates me should be godliness. My effort should be towards godliness. And now I, it's not just something that I do. This is something that I strive toward. And everything that I, every action that I take should be leading me towards this point, towards godliness. You were saying something, brother Andrea?
Yes, I mean, thank you so very much. Just one more comment. Um, I guess the idea is that sometimes we, we ease upon ourselves, you know, I was, I'm, I'm sometimes I might say, well, I'm not so bad after all. Or I might try to compare ourselves with other people, you know, and, or look at what that person is doing, you know, um, you know, if, if that person is in a church so long, if that person is doing this, then, then it means that I can probably, it, you know, if they are doing it, then it should excuse me to, 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 to do the same thing. So, so, you know, sometimes we, 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 we put people above us, above us, or we think that they should be our example in, in, in how we, um, um, do church or do God, um, you know, and, 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 so, so, and I guess I'm also saying that, 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 that in a, in conjunction with, um, easing upon ourselves to say, I'm not so bad after all, you know, because this person, so I compare myself with other people and then, and then I ease upon myself. So I don't have to put in as much exercise. I don't have to, I don't have to because they're not doing it. And this person not doing it and things like that. So, so is it that this pursuit is, is it a personal something? Or, or, or is it okay for us to, to include other people and, and let them be the standard for, for, for our godliness? Or, or how much exercise we put in for that matter? I'm done. Finish.
Well said, brother Andrea. And I guess to, to just answer the rhetorical question, we, we have definitely not, definitely not because in that kids' win problem, people will always let us down. People always let us down. People always fall short. And all right, before I can, Brandon, go ahead. I see, I see, um, I see your hand.
Um, to add to what brother Andrea was saying, I think, oh, first and foremost, good night, everyone. Um, I think one thing we should look at as well is that in our, in our spiritual endeavors, in our endeavors to, um, make God happy and be the best that we can be. If we are to take that approach with, um, the church and God's word. For example, if you have a problem, say, for example, you have a problem speaking and you practice, you learn how to speak. That is a transferable skill that when you're in the work world or in, in outside of church, it's not like you automatically forget how to speak. You have that ability now that you can transfer elsewhere. Similarly, if you're, if you're, if you want to learn how to teach, if you find yourself in a position of management, you, you are able to teach and you're able to lead. A lot of things that we might strive to achieve in the work world, we don't have such, we don't necessarily have such barriers when it comes to the church. I don't think for the most part, if you show a genuine interest and you speak to a lead and you say you want to go and you want to help with teaching the young children. Or, or if you want to teach a young man, the men, or as a woman, you want to teach a young woman, you don't, you don't necessarily have that barrier versus if you were at work and you wanted to lead a group, you'd have to be, you have to have certain permissions, qualifications. I, I think there's a lot more red tape where that is concerned. So I said, I just said, why, if, if we are, if we have these avenues readily available to us, why not take advantage of it and why not make ourselves the best that we can be?
Excellent point, Brandon. Excellent point. You basically summarized the la- the latter part of the verse. And I guess that part is going to be easy to cover. We should be able to finish that before class is done. Um, brother, Ingle says, we at times view the statements we are only human as a crutch to be comfortable with where we are and not try to improve. Improvement is always a nice thing to, nice to say thing, but what practically am I doing and is this being manifested? I presume that should be to maturity for it. So, yeah, it is very easy. Um, I was having a conversation with our brother um, a few, probably a week and a half ago. And a lot, it's easy for a lot of the scriptures of encouragement to become crutch scriptures, where we take so much comfort in the fact that God is gracious and God is merciful and that God will provide a way of escape and that God will forgive me that and that, um, we all sin. That we, 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 we get comfortable. We don't feel like we need to put out the effort to be as pure as we can. That we, 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 we get comfortable, we don't feel like we need to put out the effort to be as pure as we can. And then we say, we're, we have all sins, so I'm a sinner. It's on, Paul said that he's the, um, the thing that he, he wants to do, he doesn't find himself doing them, so. When I want to something and I'm not finding myself doing it, see there in scripture. And the kind of comfort that we provide ourselves sometimes, when what we should be using this. As is motivation, when I get up, when I fall down, don't stay down, because Paul fell down as well. But Paul also did amazing things for God. A lot of the times we don't use that part, we don't look at the things that Paul suffered and say, hey, you know. If Paul can go jail for Jesus, you know, we're ready, no, we only look at when Paul, Paul had committed sin and they see they. Paul has seen too, so I'm good. Can't be like that, can't be like that. And as, as Brandon reined forth, the passage goes on to say. Having promise of the life that now is and of that which is to come. Having here means to hold on, to have own or possess. And what is established here is having the promise, promise here meaning an announcement. Of more often spoken of a promised good or a promised blessing. And that promised blessing is established right after, and that is the life that now is and of that which is to come. And life here can be used literally or figuratively. So we can speak to life within the life that we are currently breathing. The, the spirit of life that is within us, and then it can be speaking to the life that. That um we shall have eternal life, which is established based on the use of know and the use of to come. So know means at this time, the present know. And here connecting the know and that which is to come. And to come here meaning to intend, meaning through the idea of expectation. So to be about to be, do or suffer something. So essentially to come means. I am going to do something, I am about to be something, I am about to suffer something, and this is used, sorry. This is used objectively, meaning that I am not, the thing that is to come. Is coming to me, I am not the one making the thing come. So essentially what Paul is saying here is that godliness, the profit of, the profitability of godliness. Is not just for heaven. It is for now, it is the life that we have now, there is profit in godliness. In regards to the life that we live now as Christians, and that's what Brandon, that's a part of what Brandon was saying. That the things that we benefit from striving. To be godly, striving to carry out the things, the duties that God requires of us. In our commitment to God, those things, the things that we garner from it, aren't just beneficial to us in the future. Aren't just beneficial to us salvation wise. They're benefit to us now in the life that we live on earth, the type of people that we will be. Striving after godliness benefits our life, and if we look at the things that. Come to us in our attempt to be godly, to commit to God. If we could trust God, the way God would have us trust him, imagine a life without anxiety. Imagine, imagine a life without worry, imagine a life without concern. Imagine a life where joy and the comfort of hope. Knowing that regardless of what happens now, my salvation and eternal life is secure. Imagine the interaction we would have with one another when we are kind, when we are honest, when we don't malice. When we're not proud, when we're willing to share, imagine, imagine what. Our Christian life would be like, imagine how people would flock to Christianity when we.
Yes, yes, you must say.
Live like this, yes, brother Smith, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I was, you're making the very point I was making, is that this is a major marketing point, this is a great evangelistic point. People always say, let me live my life, and then, you know, when I've sold all of my. Well, it's, and whatever, I can come back in, uh, I can come in. But no, you're going to be better off if we, maybe that's what we should look at, what are the ways, you know, have the. I don't know if you want to call it testimonies or whatever, to show that really and truly you are better off in this very life, not just talking about. The hereafter, um. Through godliness, yeah, either from stopping you to, from making bad um choices. But also reaping bene- the benefits, is that, is that key for, you know. Where Brandon was going, this is really a key and we were just, we are stopped you from going there now is exactly that, that. There is a benefit right here and now in this life and not just afterwards. So all of the young people that, you know, usually are saying, boy, let me just wait and live out my life first and then, you know. When you start to quill up, then you can make sure you get yourself, you know, um, in, 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 into the church.
Alright, good point, brother Smith, and a lot of people do realize also that it's harder. The thing that you, if you have essentially created habits. That run counter to what God would want you to, to, to do or to be. And then now you decide that after having forged these habits in stone. You now decide that you want to give yourself your life to Christ, you have a, you have a battle. And no one, I'm not saying that those who chose to become Christian early don't have their own struggles. But a lot of things that individuals struggle with, that they have forged over time. You know, have, is, is almost that you're, you're rewiring your system. To please God, whereas initially you would have just been wiring it to please God and. I don't know, when I think of the fruit of the spirit and the fact that these are the things that. Should be manifested in us when we wholeheartedly accept the things that God would have us to accept. I think that it almost gives me the idea of exercise. Where the muscles have been given to us by God, but the amount of strength that we can. We can display with those muscles come through consistent use of the muscle. Similarly, the spirit has been given to us by God, but the love, the patience, the, the gentleness, the kindness. The meatness, the self-control, the long suffering, if I am not exercising those. The things that have been given to me by God, what can I list with them? How, what can I push with them, who can I help with them? And I, I encourage us, me for. Everybody else second to. To, as brother Andre said, take a, take a look. Take a look at, at what we are doing and where our effort is going, and that is actually an exercise that we're going to be doing. Not too long from now, so even if you don't want to do it yet, I'm going to see if I can make us do it. So that we can, we can, we don't, it, it don't make sense to waste the time. It don't make sense to waste the energy, if we're doing it, let's see if we can do it right. And of course, this doesn't mean perfection, this doesn't mean that it's going to be easy. Anybody who, who does physical exercise, understand that the first few weeks are usually the hardest. Those are the, the times when you want to give up, like if, boy, this can't be done. But ask anyone who has done it consistently and they'll tell you, you get to a point where this is what you want to do. This is what brings you joy, it, it feels like this is now giving life to you. That is the kind of profit that Paul is telling us, that godliness blows physical exercise out of the water. Wouldn't, wouldn't it be great if we could say we got to a point where exercising towards godliness is the greatest joy that we have? That we wake up in the morning and rather than work and rather than, than. Teaching and rather than whatever it is that we need to do, the bills etcetera, I can't wait. To strive after godliness in whatever form it takes. That is what is, that is what is going to get me through the day, that is my focus, that is my, that, that is my all. Wouldn't it be wonderful to get to that state, but to get there, we're going to have to get through the, I don't want to do this, I don't want to wake up, I don't want. To go the extra ten minutes, I don't want the, the extra five push up, metaphorically speaking. We'll have to get through that part to get to the, this is amazing feeling. And we can, we can, but we have to, the commitment, and that's why we're looking at priorities. We have to decide that this is the most important thing, and when we get to that state, then it is easier to inform our body. To move in that direction. Password? Hold on, is that Engel Brown on, Isaac? Engel, go ahead.
See, I thought I could do it.
Ah.
I know, I was just testing if I could actually beat Sister Smith, I, I actually haven't gotten a recording from your last meeting, but that was.
Wow, wow, Egghead, like you make people put out their money now. This man wanted to prove that we could beat Sister Smith and not get any points, go ahead, Sister Smith.
I'm sorry, for bodily exercise profits a little.
That is right, that is right, um, I'm almost sure I'm going to see the chat, somebody saying that, Eggels will lose points. No, nobody don't get it. Um, one last comment before we give you the password and, and then we hand over for closing prayer. Um, Kirk says, to be able to make godliness a way of life, we need to renew our mind. And a major part of that is realizing that leaving God is not a Sunday or Tuesday affair. That's, that's a big, that's a big one right there, Kirk, that's a big one right there, a lot of us, that is, that is. And it's easy to get into that mindset, I'm not going to say, you know, some people claim that Christian died on Sunday, you're the Sunday Christian. And you know, the rest of the week, you're, you're horrible, and I, I wouldn't say that that's necessarily the case, but I think sometimes. We, we forget how important it is to live daily. Um, brother Andrea, go ahead, we, we'd one last comment, after that, I'll give you the password for next week and then we close.
Uh, it's, it's just to share a passage with you to, to, to cement something that you mentioned, um, Hebrews chapter five thirteen and fourteen. Um, anyone who lives on milk, being still an infant, is not acquainted with the teaching about righteousness. But solid food is for the mature, who by constant use, and, and that's the point I want to pull out. By constant use have trained themselves to distinguish good from evil.
Thank, thank you, brother Andrea, powerful, let me make sure if I can add that in the slide and pretend like I'm implying a joke. Hebrews five thirteen and fourteen, right? Brother Andrea? Confirm for me?
Yes, yes, correct, correct.
Okay, alright, thank you. Alright, so. In, in light of the last password, this password, the next password was Sunday. Is but godliness is profitable for all things. But godliness is profitable for all the things. So we're going to, we're going to move into a new passage, come Sunday, we're going to look at Mark eight. This is another one of the big ones, and this one is going to look at specifically or addressing specifically the idea of stealth. And how we have to be very careful how selfish then. Alright, that's. It's a class, thank you for your participation as always, um. And I look forward to class on Sunday. Alright, I'll hand over to the closing prayer or.